Yeah.
Okay, call to our special city council meeting workshop of May 18th. Second item on the agenda, discussion possible action on various pending City of Guthrie grant applications. Lee Roy, you're taking the lead on that, I assume?
Yes, sir. Can you damn likes make it a little easier? As we talked on our meeting on May 4th, what we're trying to do is do a series of workshops talking about grant application, city projects, leading up to our retreat on August 13th, so that you'll have all this information. Then when we get to the retreat, the plane retreat on August 13th, we won't have to spend so much time going over the information. We can just get into the meat of it and you all can talk about priorities and those kind of things. So at our meeting on May 4th, we did a workshop at 6 o'clock talking about the water distribution main and valve replacement project, and we talked about congressional community project funding, or what used to be called earmarking, and we had five proposals that we submitted for consideration. At the end of my presentation, I'll give an update on some of the earmarking that has been done by Congress to date. Of course, we had orientation on May 11th. Tonight, we're going to be talking about potential grant applications to the Economic Development Administration. On June 1st, we'll have another special workshop at 6 to talk about trash and convenience center rates versus waste connections, collection disposal rates, they charges. We're going to talk about the youth sports facilities, give an update on that, revisit the issue of a hotel tax rate increase, and other funding opportunities. On June 15th, we're going to talk about, there's a new statute that allows for public safety protection districts within the city limits where you can have up to five meals of property tax for police, spar, and EMS. We're going to provide the background on that new statute. On the 6th and the 20th, we got a couple open dates there that we've not selected topics, but I'm sure we will have topics between the time we get there. And then on August 3rd is the target date for us to have our workshop on our FY '22 budget.
That came quick.
Comes real quick, doesn't it? The... There's always somebody outside of Guthrie deciding winners or losers. When you go to Congress and ask for earmark money, then the senators and the congressmen, they decide what to earmark. When you apply for grants, it can make a big difference on who actually handles your grants and processes. Sometimes you get an individual that works well with you, sometimes you get an individual that is not as generous or easy to work with. But under the Economic Development Administration, EDA was awarded $1 billion in the 2020 CARES Act funds. A hundred percent of that's been awarded, so we missed that opportunity. And it wasn't for lack of trying. We tried to work with AgCog and others to get an application put together, but we just couldn't, we just kept trading water. But there was $33 million of grants awarded in Oklahoma out of that round of funding. No grants were awarded in the AgCog service area, which is Canadian, Cleveland, Logan, and Oklahoma counties. Now, EDA has been awarded $3 billion, three times as much money, under the 2020 American Rescue Plan funding. That's yet to be awarded. They haven't come out with the notice of funding ability, availability to tell us the program guidelines, but we want to get ahead the curve and be ready. This is just a listing of the various grants. Out of the first billion dollars is awarded in Oklahoma, again, $33 million. These grants typically were 80% grant, 20% batch. You would notice that there's a couple. Ardmore got two, and Weatherford got two. They weren't both to the city. One was to an entity at the university, and one was the city of Weatherford. But there were some communities that got more than one grant. We think Guthrie is prime for economic development. If you look at the area universities that we have for education, look at the career tax that in our area, and then Guthrie Job Corps. We sit right on I-35. We're in one of the fastest growing counties in the state. We're adjacent to I-40 and in close proximity to Will Rogers World Airport. Our county continues to grow. Between 2000 and 2010, our county grew by 8,000 or 24%. By what I had available when I did this, 2019, that nine-year period, it grew another 14%. And our county population continues to grow. We're a community of just over 11,000. We're the county seat. Over the last two years, we've experienced multiple federal declared disasters, ranging from floods, ice storms, and most recently, the Arctic blast. Our tourism economy was significantly hampered by COVID-19, and those will be things we use as justification of why we need the grants. You've got to show need, and those are the things that we will show need. Our goal will, of course, to build more resilience into our community by diversifying our economy. And one of those ways is to have commercial projects that can go into an industrial park, build our film industry, add to our airport revolving loan money to provide gas financing to businesses that are trying to either grow or relocate. This is just an example of what COVID-19 did to our tourist industry in 2020. This is a list of the events that were canceled in 2020, and gives you some ideal of the estimated attendance that we lost of people coming to Guthrie. And again, this is there, and will be part of our application to show need, because it ties back to COVID, this $1 billion they give out and the $3 billion they get. If you look at our comprehensive plan done in 2002 in the area of economic development on page 28, it identifies two areas that the City of Guthrie should concentrate relative to industrial parks. One of them is an industrial park along I-35, which is where our 80-acre sets. The other area identified in our comprehensive plan is the ideal that we should have a airport business park at Guthrie Edmond Regional Airport. Pending EDA applications, of course, subject to final approval by the city council, and hopefully we get you your guidance tonight. We budgeted $4.4 million to do the industrial park if we were going to fund it 100% ourselves. If we get 80% of that paid for through an EDA grant, then that frees up that money that we could use to match additional grants. So that's why we use, say, we got $4.4 for grants. Emblem Strategy out of Edmond, Oklahoma, we interviewed them, and they had, they did the City of Woodworks EDA grant. They've done some other grant applications. We were very impressed with them. They will charge us $7,500 flat rate for each grant, so we have retained them to assist us in the grant preparation. The, if you go back to our last retreat in August of 2020, under economic development, some of the projects develop an 80-acre shovel-ready industrial park, and you'll notice that's priority number one on what we're looking at as far as EDA grant applications. Downtown Business Recruitment Development Plan. We've been working with the International Economic Development Council. They've got a grant to bring technical assistance in and spend time in Guthrie and help us develop a business recruitment plan because of COVID. All of these professionals that volunteer their time through this process have not been willing to travel, so we have postponed that. As soon as we get back where everybody's comfortable traveling, we will reschedule that and work on item number two relative to looking at downtown, how we can develop and recruit and still maintain our historic element. I-35 Corridor Shopping Center, we don't have an immediate plan for that, but we keep trying to work with different people to look at how we can continue to develop along I-35. Of course, we do have some development occurring right now on I-35 where Taco Bueno and Tokyo Square. And then the fifth one that you all identified in the retreat was explore opportunities to enhance film and movie industry. So looking at that, the projects we come up with that we thought would be good applications to consider, we probably won't submit all four of these applications, but we would like to at least identify two to submit and then decide what degree of readiness do we want to be at. My understanding on the billion dollars that they awarded, they were going out to the different congressional reps and asking them, "Do you know anybody that wants to apply?" And they were having a little bit of difficulty finding places to, homes for that billion dollars. Well, if they got $3 billion, it may occur where they have money left over and looking for projects to do. If we have projects that are shelf-ready to go out to bids, it'll make it as easy as for, yes, we got one, and submit it. So we'd like to maybe do two applications and then pick a third one and have it ready to go in case we get a call, "Hey, we got funding left over. We're looking for a project." Number one is the industrial park. Seventy, it's actually 77 acres, but we always refer to it as 80. Our estimate was $4.3 million, but for purposes of this grant, we're going to reevaluate that estimate, because in the last few months, we've seen quite an increase in cost of materials and construction. So we estimate, we bumped it up to $5 million, and so $4 million would be grant, and 20% match, a million dollars would be our share. So then that would free up the other money that we had budgeted for the park to match other grants. Film and soundstage with select equipment is our priority number two, and we'll get into details on all this, but again, a $5 million project with a 20% match, we would have a million dollars invested in that. Priority number three is a business industrial park at our airport. That's in the preliminary stages, so I don't have any numbers on that. And then number four is looking at applying for revolving loan funds. $1.6 million, we would match $400,000. We'd have a $200,000 loan pool, and I'll go through some details of each one of those applications. Of course, the industrial park, it's off of 33 East College and Miss Western Boulevard. Bill Myers, Myers Engineering is the engineer on it. This is city property, city-owned property within the city limits, so we don't have to purchase the property. It's zoned I-1 industrial. Property has been surveyed with elevation contours. We got a Phase 1 environmental site assessment. We've done geotechnical studies on subsurface soil conditions, on compaction rates, and those kind of things, and the construction plans are close to 65% complete. So this project is pretty close to being ready to go out for bids. This probably, it's not important to you, but when we do make applications to EDA, we have to show what census tract it's in. So we just put this in our presentation when we talk to EDA. Again, we've developed a preliminary plan, and we've divided it up. We'll probably do this part of the park first, and do road improvements on East College, and do entry roads. This portion, we probably will not develop to the same stage in case we have an industry comes in and they want 20 acres. We have the ability to do 20 acres. If somebody wants a larger site, of course, if somebody wanted eight, you could combine two lots, or if they wanted six, you could do a lot and a half, but that's kind of the way we plotted it out. And Myers' estimate was just under 4.3. We think that cost estimate, when we get ready to actually do the application, will need to be updated with recent inflation that we've seen. So that's kind of our first priority, is the industrial park on our 80-acre zone by the city. The second project is film, soundstage, and select equipment. Of course, we all know Oklahoma is one of the most geographically diverse states in the country, has 10 distinct ecological regions, perfect for film and TV productions with its low cost of living, wide open spaces, and our 37% film industry tax rebate, and being a film-friendly state. The, Oklahoma's film production sector has continued to grow. In fiscal year '21, the Oklahoma Film and Music Office estimates a creation of 10,000 local jobs with a direct fiscal impact of $161 million from 33 film and television productions utilized in the state's incentive. And that's comprised of commercial projects, music videos, student films, and more. So there's a growing demand for film crews. To give you an example, we have a film that's been filmed in Guthrie this week and last week, a small-budget film. The Reagan movie is coming back in June to finish their movie because of COVID, they had to shut down. They've got some scenes that are coming back. Because there's not enough people behind the camera, sound crews, lighting crews, crews that set up, the film crews. The group that we have in town right now was going to stay and shoot two films, back-to-back, because there's not enough people to work. They will leave, let Reagan do theirs, and then come back. So there's a shortage of the number of film crews available in our state to accommodate all the films that we want to come here. So they have to schedule around other films to make sure they have crews to do their filming. You all know the history as well as I do of the films that have been shot in Guthrie. Some of the highlights, of course, Rain Man, Twister, Elizabeth Town, The Killer Inside Me, more recently, Christmas in the Heartland, Deadly Romance, Mustard Seed, and of course, Reagan, which is probably one of our larger-budget ones. $30 million was their budget. The Chamber of Commerce, Meridian Tech, and the City of Guthrie collaboratively put in a grant and was awarded $100,000 from the Oklahoma Office of Workforce Development. The concept is, at Meridian Tech here in Guthrie, there will be a center of excellence in training film crews. So that will make us a center of developing crews to shoot movies. And not only will they be available as future employees, there will be intern opportunities for them to get hand-on experience when films are happening in our community to continue and further enhance their education. Just Reagan itself, you can see that the impact from Reagan was $16.6 million, local jobs created in the state somewhere around 2000. What we're looking at, a soundstage is a large soundproof structure where you can build a house inside, or whatever, a bus station, or have a model of, cut out of an airplane, where you have a controlled environment, you control the sound, and you can shoot the movie without interference and worrying about different things. In the tax credit for films in Oklahoma, there is an advantage to come to towns under 15,000. You get a better incentive, and there's a higher incentive if you are using a soundstage, a certified soundstage, which has to be 7,500 square feet or bigger. So by us being the size we are, and if we have a soundstage, films that come here will get the maximum credit, tax credit. Our target goal that we're working on is a 12,000 to 20,000-square-foot facility with features similar to one large soundstage capable of being divided into two, a second smaller soundstage, the ability to have a screening room or theater, sound recording studio with surround sound capability, two high-end color grading and post-production suites. The next big move for us is not just shoot the film here, but the actual post-production, where they edit it. And so that's why we want to have the two high-grade color grading and post-production suites. Eventually, we want to try to attract a TV series to shoot here, instead of just a film that comes and goes. On this particular one, we don't have an architect at this time. If the city council gives us the green light to pursue this application, we're in the process of putting a project committee together that would be made up of city staff, career tech staff, members from the film industry to assist us. We're in the conceptual design stage, so we will need to work with the architect, this committee, to come up with plans for the application, the floor plan, elevation drawing, select equipment, and cost estimate. So we will have to invest some money to get the documents we need to have them to make the application. Recent developments, we don't want to get left behind. We have been a shining star. Some people refer to us as the film capital of Oklahoma. We don't discourage that, by the way. But recently, Perry Surf Studios repurposed the Cox Convention Center into a soundstage. We don't want everybody to start filming in Oklahoma City now, instead of filming in Guthrie. Green Pasture Studios converted a elementary school into a soundstage in the Oklahoma City area. Right now, we've got a couple makeshift film studios. All the films that film here that need a doctor's office or hospital, they rent the Ringrose Medical Clinic, and like the movie shot here a couple years ago, Death by a Thousand Cuts, that was used as a hospital location in their movie. I forget the name of the movie, I believe. Yes. That was a doctor's office in that movie. And then, of course, the temple is used for a lot of substitutes. This is the Reagan movie, and it was used, the temple was used for everything, from the Oval Office to the Coconut Grove Supper Club in that movie, and you could see all of the trucks around. Councilman Channel very familiar with all those trucks around the temple. So we got a couple substitutes that we can use, but we just don't have a true soundstage. And sometimes, the temple's not available because of other activities that they have scheduled there for the purpose the building was originally built. But they are very favorable towards movies. It is a revenue generator for them. What we're looking at, this is just an example of a soundstage climbed west. It's a 10,000-square-foot facility. It's 19 foot tall. Our understanding now, you should probably have a 30-foot clearance to the white superstructure, is what we will be looking at. This is another one, Pratt Institute Film Department in New York, and you can see they got a larger soundstage that can be subdivided. They've got a smaller one. There's their screening room. They got editing rooms. That's just a prototype of what we want to try to look at. The third application, and we can go back and go through these and discuss them when we get to the end, is to look at development of a airport business park using the Economic Development Administration grant. And then, secondly, through funding from the Oklahoma Aeronautics Commission, look at constructing a state-of-the-art terminal building. Be two different projects, but they'd be tied together. This is the road into airport. Our current airport terminal is here, and this is one of the older buildings, Hangar 1A. That's where we'd like to put the new terminal, and this is the land area that we would like to purchase. Again, the census tract that it's in. We've identified roughly 72 acres for land acquisition. It's our understanding that we will have willing sellers that will be interested in working with us to purchase this property. We already have an existing taxiway/ runway project that is in the five-year plan, being funded with 90% FAA funds. We would tie into that and use this land as a business airport. We'll need to come up with a cost estimate for acquisition, utility extension, site development, roads, taxi wells, and then a design. Toby Baker with CEC Corporation, our airport engineer, will be, their firm will be the engineer on this project, because they are airport engineers. It is private property. It's within the city limits. It is zone I-1. We're just at the conceptual stage. If we do the first two and send those applications in, then our discussion would be, do we want to develop construction plans for current or future grant applications? Is that the third one, do we want to have it ready in case we get a call, "Do you have a project?" We could say, "Yes, we do, and here's the plans." This is the existing terminal building, Hangar 1, and Hangar 1A, this is Hangar 1A. That's the building we would like to replace with a state-of-the-art terminal. This is an example of the terminal at Ada that cost about $1.3 million. It's their new airport terminal. The last one is the EDA revolving loan fund. We would, it would be $2 million, $1.6 million EDA grant, $4 million city We would, it would be $2 million, 1.6 million EDA grant, 4 million city of Guthrie match. It will be used to increase economic activity, employment in our county, diversify our county's economic base. Right now, Logan County Economic Development Council has a USDA revolving loan fund, and the way that's structured, they borrow money from USDA, and then when they loan it out, they loan it at a higher interest rate than what they borrow from USDA. The margin they make in the difference of interest is what they operate their program under. Well, the amount of risk they can take is pretty limited when you know you got to take that money, pay that money back. If you have a $1.6 million grant, that money doesn't have to be paid back. So we're not talking about doing trash projects, but you can take a little more risk when you're loaning out grant money that you don't have to pay back. So we can be a little more aggressive. We will, if we do this program, we will do it in conjunction with Logan County Economic Development Council. We'll either get them to administer it, or we'll do some kind of partnership with them. So this would be a supplement to that program. The goals, create new permanent jobs, encourage new private investment, increase productive, productive capabilities of our economic, our current business industry, and then diversify our economy. I won't go in this, but it's primarily the use of gap financing. If you go to traditional financing and you've got a million-dollar project, they're willing to finance 800,000, then you could loan them the additional 200,000 to fill the gap on the money they need to do their project. So we could use it as gap financing. The eligible criteria for it, very similar to the USDA loan program. Again, summary and discussion at this point, you know, what is the city council's priorities? We went through four of them. This is the way staff organized them, but we clearly understand final decision rests with the city council. How many applications do we want to submit? And then, once we decide how many we go submit, do we want to invest in construction plans and cost estimate to have another project ready to go in case we happen on an opportunity? Sometimes, that's the mayor's favorite word, opportunity. We're ready to go. So now I would throw it out, try to answer questions that you might have and open the floor for discussions.
On the gap funding, I wonder what that would look like on a five-year plan of revenue generation?
Of course, if we did the revolving loan fund.
Right, that's what I mean.
We would try to do projects that we felt would repay. But, but we would be willing to take a little more risk because grant funds, if you lost those, you would not have to repay those. So what we would do, what we've done in other communities, for example, a million-dollar project, and it's not quite where the bank wants to take a million-dollar risk, but they would take a $750,000 risk. So what we've done in some communities was we bought $250,000 participation. So we had the same collateral, we were in the same lean position as the bank, but we bought down their risk from a million to 750 by buying $250,000 of participation in that loan with our loan money. So there's a lot of different ways it can be structured.
So it wouldn't necessarily generate, be a revenue generator directly, but indirectly in terms of economic development?
Well, but there would be charging an interest rate on it.
We would charge an interest rate, so it would generate some, but that's not the primary purpose. The interest rate we would charge would be geared more towards us as we recapture the money through loan payments, that we don't lose the buying power of the money you continue. Instead of having 2 million, you got 2.1 down the road. So, so that you basically keep up with inflation for your loan pool in the future.
Or a cover clause.
Correct, correct. But it's not necessarily meant to make money, it's just to replenish itself and recycle the money was one loan pays off, you have funds to do another loan.
On the soundstage, that's a pretty interesting deal. I mean, what, build like a metal building type thing?
It, I've seen them both, metal buildings, all of the, we would be the first soundstage in Oklahoma that was specifically built for that purpose. So far, all of them have been refurbished buildings. I've seen, going through the internet, I've seen them in industrial parks where they are metal buildings, I've seen where they roll brick buildings. The key is not the exterior as much as having the soundproofing inside to accommodate the filming. Now, of course, depending where we cite it, we would want to meet the design standards that the city set for buildings. We have talked to Career Tech. What we would like to do is set it on the campus at Career Tech. It will probably be owned by the city because Career Tech would, under their operating procedures, would have a difficult time leasing it to private firms to film. So we would own it, we would lease it to Career Tech for the educational piece, so they would have it available for students to learn in. And then we would also lease it to private film producers to make films in.
Right there, Meridian, is that where it's located?
Correct.
Yeah, and the airport's right there.
One more question.
Do we have your all's blessing to move forward with at least two of these and maybe get the airport ready as a third one in case the opportunity presents itself?
I think the industrial part, of course, I think is probably a no-brainer. We've been talking about that for a long time. So that is the number one priority.
I've got more.
I think that probably fits, fits our, our vision, and we've talked about it at retreat. Obviously, the others are new, newer topics. So.
But a significant grant funding, that's the key.
That's always the key. It's always the key.
We move forward with grant, I think they're all. Yeah, I agree.
Good?
I think you're getting a lot of head nodding.
Good, we will move forward.
Ready, it's on the industrial part.
Okay, we will move forward with those and keep you abreast. We have a conference call with the Oklahoma representative for EDA later this week.
The beauty, just before we go, on the film thing, partner, or putting it at Meridian, you don't have to buy the land.
Correct.
Just have to build the building.
At our last meeting, we talked about earmarking and, or what they now call community project funding, where you get direct funding through line item budgeting as they do their funding appropriations in Congress. House members could do up to 10 projects. Some House members have earmarked, some haven't. Senators will probably do something similar. We talked about the five that we submitted for consideration to our congressional delegation was water replacement of the 56 miles of water lines that predate 1975, estimated at 31.5 million. Full death reconstruction of Sooner Road and 19th Street combined would be 6.4. Relocation of the baseball complex out of the floodplain, 4.8 billion. Construction of a new Highland Park Aquatic Center, 5.2, and then a second fire station with training facilities, 3.9. Just an update, again, you're not going to get all these things, but you don't get them if you don't pursue them. And you can see that in Congress, you can see what Representative Weiss did, 10 million for bridges on I-35 between Memorial Road and Second Street, 10 million to complete work on the busy interchange at I-35 and 40, 7.4 for Oklahoma City to replace bridges on Northwest 10th Street over Grand Boulevard. If you notice the trend, it's just like competing through Edco for ODOT money. Bigger cities seem to carry more weight pursuing some of these funds than smaller communities. Tom Coe, $50 million. And if you remember, Ardmore got two EDA grants out of the first billion, so they've been very active. 50 million for the Airborne Development Authority infrastructure for airport. Funding for Department of Transportation projects, a billion, I'm sorry, a billion to support behavioral health at the Oklahoma Children's Hospital, 623,000 to upgrade Norman Regional Hospital patient rooms. And our Congressman Lucas, 2 million to establish a Center for Indigenous Health Equity at Oklahoma State University. And a little bit of a surprise one, funding for Ponca City to upgrade their train depot for possible inclusion on the Amtrak passenger rail. If the Amtrak project between Newton and Oklahoma City is funded, they have direct money. They won't have to apply. It will be in the federal budget. X amount of dollars comes to them to upgrade their depot. So you can see, the Senate is not earmarked yet. That'll happen later this year. It's my understanding some of our projects are under consideration, but that's kind of an update of what's happened so far with earmarking. We'll, so to speak, get a second bite of the apple, of course, if we don't get earmarking. Don't know the magic number, but President Biden has talked about a $2 trillion infrastructure plan, and I'm sure these numbers will all get jockeyed around and changed, but 115 billion for bridges and roads, 25 billion for airports, 56 billion modernizing water systems, 100 billion for workforce development. These dollars will be going to different federal and state entities, and we will just have to, it's like you almost need a cheat sheet on where they put all these pockets of money so you know.
Yeah, we need the water one.
Yes. And so, so we will be monitoring as this infrastructure plan is budgeted in the next federal budget to position ourselves to apply for grants through all of these different entities that receive this money. So if we, even if we don't get earmarking, we'll be positioning ourselves to be ready to apply for grants for the projects we try to get earmarked. Another bite of the apple on relocation of the youth baseball complex from the 2019 flood, Department of Commerce got $36 million for the purpose of disaster recovery, specifically addressing flood damage. We're one of the counties in that area for that 36 million. That, they got that money in 2020. We're still waiting for them to come out with the program guidelines, their, their plan, and notice of funding availability. We call them every quarter, but we will, if, if we're eligible, be applying for part of that 36 million dollars towards relocating the baseball field out of the floodplain. So if we don't get funds in one pocket, we're trying to monitor other pockets of funds that we might be eligible for.
Full-time job.
It is. And I think our staff is getting better and better at it. And what we try to do is tag team it. We don't have one person that just concentrates on this. What we try to do is put the best group, so we might have these three people working on this project, we may have these four working on that. There may be some overlap, they may be on the same one, but we try to put the best team together for each one of the projects, and we've got people trying to monitor the different ones, and I think we're getting better at it. We've got a little bit of time, and we submitted. I sent out an email to you a few weeks ago, and T-Mobile is doing a 3 million hometown takeover, and they're going to select one community for that $3 million project. And we submitted an application for that. Shonda, Rooney, Aaron, Justin, and myself put this package together. Shonda took the lead on it, and the rest of us assisted. Shonda is going to make a presentation on what our entry was that we submitted to T-Mobile.
Okay, so like Leroy said, he found this opportunity for us and kind of assigned Aaron and Justin and myself to spearhead this project, so. As far as the opportunity, what we can win, a community grant, that would be a $200,000 T-Mobile hometown grant and consulting services from Smart Growth America. Smart Growth America is an organization that has helped small towns all over the United States, and they would put this grant towards a project that either we have had in the works for a long time, one that we're trying to get off the ground, or they would work with us to come up with a new project. We would also receive a Little League field refurbishment, including tech upgrades, and T-Mobile's Little League call-up grant support. That is a grant that families can apply for, for financial assistance to help put their kids into sports. Public space connectivity, that's tech upgrades to a public space like a library or a community center. We would also get access to all of T-Mobile's resources, like enrollment in their Project 10 Million, which is connectivity for students. They would go towards 10 million households for students that may struggle to get internet with school being online so much more today. And then also the Connecting Heroes Program, which is free wireless service for all first responder agencies. And then we would also get benefits for our residents. That's free wireless, wireless service and home internet for one year, four new 5G phones and HDTV for 100 households. I couldn't find how they select the 100 households, but it's 100 households.
Drawn out of a hat.
Yeah, something like that.
And the concert?
Yeah, and then a major concert. So we would get a concert with the duo Florida Georgia Line. I don't know if y'all have heard of them or not, but they've been a pretty big deal since roughly 2012, so. And we did highlight the fact that we have hosted a large concert before with Mumford and Sons, so we have the perfect place to host Florida Georgia Line. So the way we applied, they gave you a couple different options. You could submit a photo, you could submit some verbiage, a video. We kind of did a little bit of everything plus a little bit more. So as far as our verbiage, we provided a little bit of our history, we explained how much Guthrie's been growing, and we expressed why we need this. With our video, we wanted to represent our history and visualize how much we've been growing and show off our people. Leroy came up with a great concept for the video that we were able to take off with. And then Leroy also reached out to representatives with T-Mobile, so he's already been working on building a relationship with them and letting them know, hey, we're here and we applied for this, by the way.
And they're coming to town. And they're coming to town in our community.
Yes, yep, and we highlighted that as well, so.
And we're going to show you the video.
Yep.
Entry that we made.
And Aaron did 100% of the work on this, so.
But Shonda wrote the script.
Yeah.